Okay, so the first discussion item is the agenda action item.
This is, I know we've got, we've got a few things on the agenda that are not necessarily direct, I'm sorry, we have a few things on the regular agenda that are not necessarily also on the study session agenda. So I just want to make sure there was an opportunity to discuss any action items from the regular agenda on the, on the study sessions tonight. If anyone had comments.
Anyone have any comments for question one, the action item? Okay, if there's none, to the infrastructure, excuse me, infrastructure study group.
All right, I'll let you take the, the lead on interview.
So I'll, I'll introduce this and so what we have tonight is the road recommendation from the study group. Just to lay a little background for people who are watching, for newer council people. Back in July of 2020, the infrastructure study group recommended the road improvement plan to council, council of basketball plan. Provided, provided voters approved it significantly with the two, almost two to one. The plan itself calls for the study group to make the road recommendations to council for each construction season. So in 2021 and 2022, the recommendations have already been made and approved. And so tonight we have the 2023 recommendations plus a couple of updates to 2022. So our, our engineering team is pretty much done, I think, with 2022 and be ready to start the engineering for 2023. Once, once the roads are approved. As far as the process goes, in terms of how the roads were selected, to eliminate any kind of bias, the initial road recommendation, road recommendation is made by the city engineer and the project manager and our committee members. And we do that so that it's unbiased because the, the engineers are not aware of any city politics. They don't know where committee members or council members reside. They don't know, you know, what the resident issues are and so forth. So they base their selection solely on objective criteria like pager ratings, which for those of you who don't know what pager ratings are, the visual inspection of the road, core sampling. So we did, two years ago, we did a core sampling project on pretty much every block in the city. We took two with 24 inches, 36 foot, three foot, so 36 inch feet for samples. And essentially, without getting too technical, and I don't know how technical I can get, but it allows the engineers to see what's underneath the road without ripping up the road. And so they can use that to help determine the quality of the roads and whether or not they need to be redone. And then they look at other factors, which includes things like prior, the prior paving history of the roads, the parking mitigation plans, other infrastructure work that might be simultaneously going on, lowering costs and minimizing disruption. So the recommendation itself that we have in front of you for, for 2023, I don't, it's 2.85 miles of road. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, I don't believe we made any changes to the initial recommendations that you guys made? No, okay, so, so it was pretty much, we put the recommendation to the engineers and all the work that's being done, that's being proposed for 2023 is all re-surfacing work. So in 2022, we're doing all of the major reconstruction and major rehabilitation. In 2023, it's all the, on a relative, relative scale, more simple resurfacing, which is where we mill off the top three inches of the existing roadway and replace it with three and a half inches of new asphalt. And as I said, we also had two rec, two update recommendations for, for 2022. As I noted, 2022 was already approved. And that, the 20, that next summer's construction season is focusing on the 1A full, fully construction and the 1B rehabilitation, which again is the more intensive types of, of construction. And we grouped those together for economies of scale, increase production, decrease mobilization and so forth. And so one road, which was Bloomfield from 11 Mile to Cambridge, was a road that we had intended on, on doing. We didn't realize that we didn't put it in the 2022 construction season and we had left it for 2023. And 2023 of all re-surfacing requires full rehabilitation. So we're proposing to update the 2022 road recommendations with Bloomfield from 11 Mile to Cambridge, which is in pretty bad shape. And then the approved road recommendation, initial road recommendation plan also included a very small amount of gravel road. We had initially intended to include that as part of the 2023 recommendations, but our engineer reminded us that the gravel roads require more intensive reconstruction relative to resurfacing. So that really needs to happen in 2022. So it includes the committee recommendation for the gravel road, which we chose Meadow Brook. So that's the overview. I'm sure there's a lot of questions and discussion, so I will stop on.
Any questions and a discussion around the infrastructure study group recommendation? Where would you like to start?
11 to Cambridge, so that asking that wasn't in 2021's budget? That was, should have been in the 2021 budget, since you missed it. Bloomfield with 11 Mile to Cambridge, when happened to that?
It's not in, it's not in a budget.
So we haven't paid for it yet?
No.
And what was the cost of that?
Approximately $8,000. But on two blocks.
And the tax that you're bringing in, that's the only charge you're needed for? The additional work, you're talking about taking, this is one that you said takes additional work, where you have to bring it down to the gravel?
Yes.
Is that the only one?
No, no, they're all like that in 2022.
Okay, so this is adding to the ones in 2023.
Right, that's why we moved it from 2023 to 2022, so we deal with light construction.
Okay, and then I have another question. I think I heard you said you had a unanimous agreement on doing these roads, and I don't see a signature from Mike Griffin.
Yeah, so it was unanimous on council.
Unanimous from council last year?
In July of 2020, when we made the initial recommendation to council, what we talked about.
Okay, and then the Meadow Brook paving, is this the first road in the city of Laker Village? That's a gravel road that taxpayers will be paying for, putting the bill for. Have we ever done this before? Are we setting a precedent?
Probably, and I, well, not since I, yeah, first one in years. Yeah, there was one gravel road that was being crossed.
And was it at taxpayer expense or was it at the?
Both.
5050?
Well, that's, you said residents did pay for the, there were roads.
And that's typically, I've been here 16 years, and that's typically how it's done, it's a special assessment for the property owners that live on the gravel. It's never.
I'm the only one I've ever done in 20 years out here, so.
Okay, I did reach out to a friend and client that worked for, we've got a new name, it was Oakland County Wealth Commission. And she said it's standard even through Oakland County that taxpayers who live on the gravel roads and the dirt roads are responsible for paying for it. She's never heard that taxpayers within the community are responsible.
I would say that's typical of the road commission work.
Okay.
To the dirt gravel road conversion via a special assessment.
That's what she said.
If I, if I may, I do know, I, you know, in Farmington Hills, a couple of years ago, they also passed a, they passed a, a local road millage. I don't know all of the details, but they did pass a local road millage. They had, they have somewhere in the range of approximately 30 miles of gravel road. And that millage allowed the city to initiate paving those gravel roads without having to have residents go through the SAD process. And the SAD process is still available to them, but they are, that's one community I know that they, the city is initiating the paving of the gravel roads with no expense, additional expense.
Two to three people on that road. I drove down that road, there's only three residents on it. And I drove through the neighborhood, there's 11 other blocks with at least 40 other residents on dirt roads. And I'm wondering why we picked one road out of 40?
I, I, I just wanted to share the, the information I had about that.
How are we going to handle the additional roads for the other people who live on it?
We're not, we're not paving all the paved roads that require paving. We've got two, we're doing two miles of, four eligible miles of re, of full reconstruction. Half of those people are not going to get the road paved. But to your, your question, what you brought up, Susan, and I'll, I can answer your question in terms of why we picked that road. That's exactly what we did here, is, is the millage, I mean, the. Absolutely.
Is everyone going to pay dirt roads?
100%.
No, no.
Okay, I, I. I didn't know what you.
Hello.
No, I just, I just want to know if it's there, I want to see it.
Can we all just be kind of cordial in when? I know, but, but you can, but just not interrupting each other, just to be cordial to each other and people like.
I just want to see it because I can't make it a decision if I don't see it.
Okay, I'm just asking, just.
So to, to, I'll get to your second question in a minute. So we did the exact same thing that, that they did in Farmington Hills. So we put together a road, a road proposal to council. Council voted to implement that proposal, provided that the residents approved. We put that ballot, we put that on the ballot question. The whole, the whole proposal, every single detail of what was in that proposal, that proposal was not put on the ballot. The ballot was a millage, a millage to raise 5.845 million dollars. That's the exact number in the proposal that was put together. That's how we came up with that number, because there was 5.845 million dollars of expenses. We're not doing any concrete roads. The reason why we're not doing any concrete roads is because it's in the plan that was put forth by council. You know, we're, we're, there are only 11 miles of road that were eligible under this proposal. It's because there were only 11 miles that were in that plan that were, were eligible. We're doing 2.6 miles of full reconstruction out of the four, out of four miles that are eligible. The reason why we're, we're doing that is because it was in the plan. We're doing 0.6 miles of rehab out of one mile. The reason why we're doing that is it's in the plan. The plan also shows 0.2 miles of, of gravel road out of the 1.7 will, will be done. Every single resident received this card in the mail that shows, and it shows the address where they can find out exactly what we were going to do if this 5.45 million dollar proposal was passed. Not only did they get it from this card, which sends some to the website, and you can go to the website right now. The website is right up there, it talks exactly what we're going to, what we're going to do. And we followed it to the letter, including 0.2 miles of gravel road. In addition, all the residents got the same information on their water bill five times before the election. There were town halls, it was all in the plan, we've been following the plan. I mean, our city engineer can testify, testify or confirm that we're, we're following the plan as, as, as it was, as it was written.
I got a question, I'm sorry. Is the chat not working? Did we disable the chat?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to. Is there a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that plan, that plan has been followed to the letter. So yes, I mean, in, in, in your, in answer to your exact question, Barb, the, the, did it say anything about dirt roads on the ballot, on the ballot language? No, but it didn't say anything about all the other things that we're doing too. So, I mean, there, there was a lot of discussion about, about listening to the, to the voters. And this is what the voters said, the voters were educated on this, this, this proposal. And they voted to, almost two to one to move forward with the proposal, which included gravel roads. Now, your second question, your second question about why the particular gravel road was chosen. So in, in the 2019 proposal, which, which failed, there was a lot of debate back and forth at the town halls about gravel roads and whether or not we should be doing them. There were some residents, actually quite a few residents, from more of the interior roads like Rattam and what is it? Woodward Way and so forth, you know, who, who felt that they were the only ones that used the road and that we shouldn't be doing the, the gravel road. Now, obviously, that proposal was defeated. When we started our discussions in 2020, for the, for the next proposal, the one that was eventually adopted, we had a lot of discussion about gravel roads. It was suggested by a resident that instead of doing the interior gravel roads, that we do gravel roads that are more main roads, ones that are main ingress, egress roads to, to the, the, the city, the subdivision. That, that eliminated us, or that brought us down to two roads, which was Eldorado and Meadow Brook. We, we, the final draft of the, of the proposal that we gave to council had a half a mile of gravel road paving, it had both Eldorado and Meadow Brook. One of our committee members, who was dead set against doing any gravel road, asked us if we would be willing to reduce the amount of gravel road that we were doing in order to increase the amount of asphalt road. The rest of the committee wanted the, the recommendation to be unanimous, so we agreed. And we then decided, tried to decide which road that we were going to remove from the half mile, basically the two roads that we had, we had in the, in the final draft. Eldorado has a price tag of 1.2 million dollars per mile of construction. And it's longer than Meadow Brook, Meadow Brook is shorter and has a price tag of 800,000 dollars per mile. So it's a much cheaper, cheaper road. And his request was to reduce the amount of dollars that we were using on gravel roads as much as possible. So we pulled Eldorado off the list. We also suspected that Meadow Brook was much more heavily used, which we later confirmed. And then, I got another question, Barb.
Could we, could we do a test out of all the gravel roads? Do we know how many of the roads were tested for?
No, we only, we only tested the two that we were considering for. Yeah. There's another question I was going to use for, I forgot what it was.
800,000, 1.2 million, so how many live on the?
Oh, that was the question.
Yes, one road is 800,000, one you propose to do. And that has three residents. The other one is 1.2 mil, that's only 400,000 additional, right? And here's my math, I think, how many residents live on that road?
I think there's about 119, 20, something like that. Yeah, and so, and so, so that, that brings us to another point, which was another, another reason why the committee chose Meadow Brook over Eldorado was exactly that, was the number of homes. Because Meadow Brook has three homes on that. And if, if, if an SAD process were to ever take place, those residents would have to pay about $60,000 roughly a piece in order to get that stretch of road to be paved, which would essentially be them paving that road for everybody else who uses it. So they would be by far the minority of the people that use it. And Eldorado, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, didn't they at one point request a quote for, for paving the roads many years ago? Yeah, and so they have a much more reasonable chance, should they in the future want to pave that road. You know, they've got 20 people to, you know, take 220,000 roughly dollars out of, you know, to pave that road and split it. So it's a, it's a much more feasible project than having three residents pave that road. And the fact that the, you know, there are, like you said, there are only three residents on that road. So they're not the ones who are using that road, and that road is used two to three times more than Eldorado. So those, those were factors also on the committee as to why they chose that road.
Okay, another question, there's a lot of driveways that jump onto that road. Why couldn't those people be assessed for it?
Because.
Maybe Scott could answer that. If your, if your driveway is on that road, why aren't you assessed for part of it? You're coming and going down the road off the driveway, right?
Well, you would, you'd be assessing three residents, I believe.
But I'm saying there's multiple driveways on that road. There's three residents whose houses face the road, because there's at least one, two, I think I counted three or four driveways. Why wouldn't they have, be assessed for that?
Scott, they, or isn't, isn't it, they have to give the address, have to give the street.
Yeah, and there's different ways you could, I mean, you could assess it on a square footage basis if they have frontage on the roadway. That's one way to do it, typically, in most of the practice around the position called by, by. So it, it could be, I don't know how many, again, I don't know how many properties, whether they have lines, you could start to base that up.
There's lots anymore, I think.
Any other questions?
I have some comments. When are we going to, what, the public comment, like the section on there, not during the discussions?
For the study session, it's right there at number four for public time.
Okay, that's in the past, we've let people talk. Anyway, I have expressed concerns about the infrastructure committee multiple times since it was formed almost three years ago. The committee was formed by the Lake Village City Council in 2019. Mr. Cantor was appointed as chair and Laker Village resident Joe Arnold Robinson, Hugo Carvanes, Mike Keenan, and Greg Rubelo were appointed as committee members. In July of 2019, this five-member committee recommended the $21,300,000 street improvement bond proposal to fund street repairs in Laker Village. That recommendation was signed by all of the committee members, including Bruce Cantor, who signed the recommendation as Bruce Cantor mayor pro tem, city council, including Bruce Cantor, mayor pro tem, who also seconded the motion, approved of the recommendation July 22nd, 2019. And the proposal was put on the November 5th ballot for Laker Village residents to vote on. It was defeated by almost 65% of those that voted, and I'm proud to say that I was part of the vote no group. After that proposal failed, based on feedback from the vote no group, I presented some recommendations to Laker Village City Council in January of 2020. We recommended that a new committee should be formed, expanding the number of members. Committee members should include newer residents, longtime residents, yes voters, no voters. A non-city council member resident should be appointed as the chair. There were no checks and balances in place with Bruce Cantor serving as chair, while at the same time serving as mayor pro tem and also as a voting, he is on, on the planning commission. We thought that town hall should be held prior to the development of a ballot proposal. And that the committee should take a holistic view of all of the city's infrastructure needs and develop a plan to prioritize and address those needs. Those recommendations were disregarded, and the second recommendation was presented in April of 2020, proposing a $5,845,000 road millage. This recommendation was signed by Bruce Cantor, committee chair and mayor pro tem, Joe Robinson, Hugo Carvanes, Mike Keenan, and Mike Griffin. Instead of Greg Rubelo, he had replaced him. The millage was placed on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot, and it was approved. Right after the second road millage passed, the infrastructure committee began working on a recommendation for a capital improvement bond for the water system. I was told multiple times during the road millage campaign that our water system needs were funded. But I was quite surprised when the committee came up with a recommendation to spend $7,115,000 and issue a bond in the amount of $5,380,000. They had been advised to recommend the largest amount that can be politically tolerated, and this led to an increase in our water bills of 22% per month. The recommendation was signed by Bruce Cantor, committee chair and mayor pro tem, Joe Robinson, Hugo Carvanes, and Mike Keenan. Mike Griffin did not sign this recommendation. I launched, launched a petition campaign to put the bond on the ballot, but the campaign was unsuccessful. City council approved the recommendation, and the bond went into effect the summer of 2021. Fast forward to December of 2021, the infrastructure committee is recommending the 2023 road project as well as in addition to the 2022 road project schedule. I attended the December 15th, 2021 meeting, and I couldn't believe what transpired. There was an agenda with a welcome and overview, talked about the water loss update, federal road grant applications, and then the recommendation for the street plan. Members who, residents who attended the meeting asked for copies of the recommendation. We got that, we asked questions, people were disputing what was being said. And all of a sudden, things were moved to a resident who presented a proposal about sidewalk. And then the meeting was adjourned. There wasn't any vote at the meeting, there wasn't any signing of the recommendation at the meeting. I was shocked when I saw Bruce Cantor talking to Joe Robinson, and then she signed something. Next, I watched Hugo Carvanes sign something and then shake hands with Bruce. When I asked Bruce if the committee members had just signed the recommendation, he said yes. I was appalled that he hadn't done it publicly. He said they didn't have to do things in public because they weren't an elected body. Now we have the recommendation before us, again, signed by Bruce Cantor, committee chair and mayor pro tem, Joe Robinson, Hugo Carvanes, and Mike Keenan. Mike Griffin again did not agree to sign. This isn't okay, perhaps it isn't illegal for the committee to conduct their business in private and keep no record of their meetings, but it is unethical. This group of people, led by the mayor pro tem, has made recommendations to collect and spend $15,090,000 without oversight, without transparency, without resident input, and without having to follow the open meeting act. I am not comfortable about this, and I think this committee needs to be disbanded.
Thank you for sharing, was that, was there a question or anything, was there any different, your thoughts?
No, yeah, it's all questionable.
Okay, can you pose it as a question, so maybe Bruce can?
No, I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear what Bruce has to say about it.
Scott, Scott Ring, hold on.
No, it's okay, I mean, I know how, how it works. I saw the recommendation, I believe there might be other people coming to address the situation. Even in the, your town, we've already got 2022 reconstruction, planned gravel roads. On the proposal, it's already marked as approved. So, you know, I think that's pretty confident, considering it hasn't, hasn't really come before us yet.
I'm just asking, is there, do you want to have a discussion? I know that that was a concern about having to discuss, do you want to discuss something now before we move on to item C? So that's what, I mean.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So is this, are all of these commissions, none of them are open meetings or have to have oversight or minutes or nothing? Or any, like, all these other committees that, I mean, obviously, we have to do it. But when we have all these sub-commissions and committees, none of these have minutes and meetings and oversight? And I didn't, I wasn't aware of, planning commission?
Yeah, that's.
That's part of the body. Yeah, so the, the subcommittees typically, there are not, there should not be a quorum of council members. So if there's two council members, there shouldn't be a third one that shows up at the subcommittee meetings. Because if they are, then that is potentially, that will, that not only, potentially, but that would be a violation of the open meeting act because that discussion or deliberation during that subcommittee meeting ultimately would be something that city council is going to be deciding body on. So the subcommittees typically have agendas, they do typically keep minutes and notes from those meetings, but they're not, there's no requirement that they be approved by city council because it is a subcommittee. It's not a voting body, it's a recommending body. So the recommendation coming forth from that subcommittee always would, is going to be subject to the, the decision and discretion of the city council.
So how would residents or myself, other than reaching out to somebody on the committee, find minutes or anything where, when they're running the meetings, or how do we find the follow-up on these meetings that take?
Meetings are usually recorded, the last meeting was not recorded, I don't know why. It might have had to do something with the transition, or Cheryl usually takes care of that. But in terms of, of, you know, I'm, I'm not going to go through all, all point by point, but I am going to make a couple of comments. First of all, the, in terms of, of your initial recommend, or your recommendations, you know, after the 2019 defeat of the Millers, we, we, we did put Michael Griffin on there, that was because.
Switched out for Greg Rubelo.
Correct, we put him on there, because we knew, we knew he was somebody who was against the 2019 proposal and we knew he was providing, but Michael did a fantastic job, Scott can, can track me up on that. He, he had a large footprint on the, on, you know, the, the recommendations that we've made. And then just two points that I, I can't not address. First of all, in the, in the infrastructure study group meetings, I hold those meetings as, with the public as a part of, of, a part of the committee. Every single person who was in that room got to talk whatever they wanted. We didn't, I didn't fault, keep it as a public comment, you know, just like we do in, in regular meetings because it's a study. And we wanted that input. Now, as far as, there were two things that were just egregiously wrong in this inherent statement. First off, all the, all the committee members were polled in that meeting. I went around at the end of the meeting and I said, the recommendation, does anybody have any changes to the recommendation? Or is everybody fine with it? I said, do you? I said, you, Joe, Joe, and they all shook their heads. And then I did not say that these meetings didn't have to be done, however you said it. What I said, what I said was that the documents don't have to be signed in the meeting. We sign documents regularly as council, and that cocktail was always giving us documents to sign outside of meetings. So even under the open meetings act, if I'm correct, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. Documents don't have to be signed in a meeting. The people were voice polled, everybody agreed, we got their signatures, and it becomes a public document because we all now have it, and all the residents can see it, it's on the website if anybody wants to see it. So there's no secrecy involved. And as far as all the other points, I'm not going to go through them one by one.
Okay.
Typically, what I, what I, what I've done in the past is, is after the, after the meeting, I have sent a summary email to the members of the. Again, there's no, there's no requirement or obligation to take minutes of a subcommittee meeting. It's.
But we're talking about $15,090,000 in recommendation here. This isn't something that should be done in a committee that only has to take notes if they want to.
The study group is just that, it's a study group. We make a recommendation to council, if you are now on, and we have, we've made a recommendation, so you have an opportunity to discuss and to interrogate, to make suggestions on the recommendation that's on the table, that will be on the table.
Yeah, to kind of go back to what Karen was saying, there are getting noticed that there's a lot of people that have feedback for this particular subject. So you want to, I can't see, my, I'm a glass, I can't see. Oh, hey, you want to, actually, you and Scott, or you and Suzie might have to change seats if you want to provide feedback. And I think there were some other people that was in the other room that had feedback. It's going to be like two minutes, because we, you know, we have to go on to the council meeting, but it'll be two minutes, okay? Pam, Pam or Scott McPhee, can you, someone has to do the two-minute clock, please.
Good afternoon, council. Or session group. My name is Joe Robinson, and I sit on the infrastructure committee. I was sitting in the other room, and I was listening, and first off, I'd like to say I'm a hall. At the personal attack, that anything you say that we're doing is fraudulent. That's a personal affront. And it's rude, and it's unjust. Secondly, I'd like to say, since this committee, since its inception, the most participation we receive are the five people that showed up on December 15th. This committee has been in place since 2019. You've had every opportunity to come to every meeting and provide every bit of feedback that you could, but you didn't.
I can move.
But now, one time. And so it takes more than one meeting to put in place the proposals that we've set forth. So I'm just here to say, everything that we've done has been by the book. It's been above board, and for you to implicate or, or indicate that we've done anything that's fraudulent, I'm not, I'm not going to stand for that because I am the chief financial officer for the city Detroit Arfa Agency. I cannot have someone calling me a crook, basically, is what you're saying.
No, I did not say that.
No, that's what you imply.
I apologize if that's how it came across, I was just within saying that you were the, and the issue I have with, with the chair. I, I would, I appreciate your dedication.
You set aside your personal differences that you have with the council member.
I don't have personal differences.
Okay, thank you, Joe, for coming in. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the hallway?
Scott, can you put your alarm on?
So, yeah. Good evening, don't start until they can get the time started for you, okay? Sure, go ahead. Tell them when you're ready, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nikki Morton. I am a Laker Village resident that voted in favor of the roads and infrastructure proposal, primarily because it included funds to pay the roads. I live on the corner of Sunnybrook and Meadowbrook, directly behind Chase Bank, and I am one of the three residents that are directly impacted by what I would consider one of the worst portions of unpaid roads. Almost 10 years ago, when I purchased my home, my realtor saw the potential in the home, and like myself, found an immediate appeal to the community. However, in her wisdom, she warned me that the charm of the unpaid road left unattended would become burdensome and unappealing. She could not have been more accurate in her forecast. My personal experience over the past three years has been exhausting. I watched the sand路as drivers literally drive on my lawn, dodging potholes of all sizes that covered the entire road. There is nowhere left to go but on the lawns, which are disappearing right before my eyes. The size of the potholes have grown over time, and so has the gravel needs to fill them. As drivers pass, I am faced with large rocks being catapulted in my yard or cars that are parked in my driveway. The dust, the green mud, and noise caused by the rocks is at times unbearable and honestly embarrassing while holding outdoors. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my personal experiences, and I would hope that you would consider them. However, my personal experience is mine, and we can't let our personal experiences speak for everyone. So in this case, I implore you to put any personal belief and opinion aside and allow democracy to prevail, in that the citizens have spoken loud and clear. So you have a civic duty to honor the voice of the citizen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You missed a question, why are the dirt roads unattended?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
Why are they unattended?
Who's responsible for attending the dirt roads?
Take care of the dirt roads. They put in gravel, and they grade them, but when it's winter time, it's a little harder to grade because you can't, they're very heavy. When it's frozen.
No, that sounded like it was more in the fall or the summer. I don't think she's referring to recent, because it's an ongoing problem for her.
That's what we have to ask her, you know, you can reach out to her and ask her, because that would be a.
I live, I live on a dirt road, and I can share, it's always really bad. Doesn't matter what time of year it is, so. They grade it just the way.
Okay, so then, saying on, on, you ready? Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, I would just want to address on Mike Griffin. As a member of the infrastructure committee or study group, I think that's, you're calling it that now, but as you may notice, on the infrastructure committee recommendation, I didn't sign the document. I didn't sign it because it was my opinion that the chair needs his influence to include a project for which he could personally advantage himself, namely to get the gravel road paid for his own benefit. When I joined the committee, I was initially struck by the influence the chair had, and by the lack of initial input by the rest of the committee that we seem to have. We were presented with something usually at the meeting, and we expected to agree with what was presented in a fairly short timeframe. Also struck by the fact that the chair kept insisting on inclusion in gravel roads, and that one in particular gravel road kept being included in the proposal. I find the chair to be a pleasant person, but I think the influence of the committee on projects needs to be looked at by the council and city management. City's code of conduct states that each employee, official or volunteer, is required to conduct him or herself efficiently and in a man, professional manner at all times, and no employee shall, or official or volunteer of the city, show you the public office, or employment provided. Yeah, now, no one on the committee except for the chair had anything particular project. Most of the part of the city, most, for the most part, the city engineers selected the projects, although I wasn't always clear under criteria. And outside of this, we presented over and over with one segment of gravel road, better of gray, which is the recommendation that is of particular interest to the chair. It never has made sense to me that gravel roads were to be included in the scope because, as the boss said, you know, heard that they were not, misfaced the chair, well, the chair's everything, but then I don't remember it being recommended by the engineer, and they were not expressly included in the millage proposal. The precedent in the city's always been the residents of the gravel road paid for the first page, and further, there's been no clear criteria.
Pardon? Good time, so thank you.
Okay, I would like to give you something, though, with the reason that I think that, that this particular road is being selected.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have a whole amount of time you speak since the rest of the, and the chair. We were steered at every turn to this road, whether it was Mr. Rick Williams to come and, you know, send us a letter as to why he thought it was, without knowing any relationship that he might have. But I'll send you a letter with my full statement.
Okay, thank you.
Can these people speak at the next question?
You can come in there, yes.
Should we tell them we could finish up the next?
Oh, yeah, if you wanted to, ma'am.
No one's up, thank you. First of all, Mayor Dierd, I'd just like to extend my condolences to you on behalf of your son. With that being said, I am the family of a resident on Meadowbrook. And a neighbor, I was listening to her testimony, and there was question about the grading and the filling of the road. Yes, it was occurring on Mondays, right after trash or what have you would pick up. The problem is, as they fill them, they're freshly filled, cars fly past and those rocks kick up. It's dust in the summertime, I'm sure you guys can open your windows and enjoy a nice breeze, we can't. I'm sure you don't have to worry about pebbles and large rocks hitting, you know, your nice expensive cars and things like that, I'm sure you don't have to worry about that, we do. I was also a little perturbed, because as I was setting, listening to comments, and as I'm hearing the dispute about the arrangements that's within the meeting, whether or not the minute should be done, whether or not they should. Unfortunately, this is not the place for that. Those should be standards that's set up before the committees even form, whether you guys have to go and counsel or whatever that needs to be done. And once the, once the protocol is set up, the dollar amount that we're dealing with, it wouldn't matter as long as the requirements are being met. Unfortunately, some of the committees do deal with large dollar, but if you guys are the ones that determine no meeting minutes need to be kept, then we can't then go back and penalize that very same committee because we disagree with whatever is being disposed of. So with that being said, it is unfair to think that three residents should have to pay for a road that is traveled by the whole township.
I apologize. Barb said if you want to come back during the meeting, that's the meeting that will be starting at seven, then you can come to the event.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, miss your name?
If she wants to give one, I can do that.
Oh, oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Hi, my name is Elaine Mantinen.
Hold the microphone closer to your, you can pull it deep. Okay.
No messing up, good?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Elaine Mantinen. I'm here because I was one of the people who voted yes for the road millage. The 63% of us voters did. The information was widely available since July of 2020, while in the process of the vote, that some of the money would be used to pay the gravel roads. And 63% of the voting residents approved that. So now we have two council people who apparently oppose that. One of whom potentially was unaware that that was included in the ownership proposal. And so we had to spend time and money and resources relitigating something that voters already decided on. And I feel that's very insulting and very disrespectful to say that a council person could subvert the road of the voters. And I think it's always the time and money, and I think it's the opposite of listening to residents when they're trying to take away what they voted for.
Isn't there anybody else behind, facing?
No.
Okay, so we'll cut it.
Hi, Jason Hammond, 27590 California Drive Southeast. The website, sixldroad.com, was created in 2019 and updated in 2020 to share information about the infrastructure plan, actually states on its, the front page, point two of the 1.7 miles of dirt roads will be addressed most likely by main ingress through thoroughfare roads. There were four Zoom meetings advertised on that webpage during which Mayor Pro Temp Cantor reviewed the plan, and people had an opportunity to ask questions. In each meeting, the fact that point two miles of dirt roads would be addressed, what was in the plan, was stated. Anyone who made the effort to attend the infrastructure committee meetings would have transparent access to the information the committee had, and an opportunity to make comments. There is no evidence that the committee chairs directing the committee to make any recommendation based on a personal benefit to him. I think that is a ridiculous assertion. This banning the infrastructure committee will inhibit the city from being able to make very important infrastructure improvements that the city needs. The plan recommended by the committee was approved by city council unanimously, and resulted in the millage proposal going on the ballot, and which improved by 63% of the voters, as Elaine just said. And that millage, and that, as a result, I believe that we should continue to execute on that plan as it was approved by the city council and voted on by the voter.
Thank you. Suzie, are there any people that are on?
Yes.
Line that would like to see?
Delton, if you would like to speak, you're unmuted now.
Hello, I'm a resident, obviously, I live on the corner of Eldorado. Okay, sorry.
There is a technical issue, hold on one minute. Are these from the Villager, though? These are from the Villager, right? Okay. Oh, Scott, what was given to us, I guess, the review approved is from the Villager website.
I didn't, I didn't get a copy.
I do have a question. During the whole road millage campaign, I asked about roads, and I was told repeatedly that there was, that there was a list of eligible roads, that nothing was set in stone, that there was a list of eligible roads that could, that need work. And that list is very long and is not addressed in this particular road millage.
Isn't that the Pizer map that we have that shows?
No, I think that's addressed, there was, top of my head, 11 total miles, two of which, plus or minus, were gravel. So there was nine miles of paved roads that were the eligible list, of which about seven miles would be paved. And that should be on that map that you have.
The map you have now, yeah, that's different than the maps that we had previously.
The maps are from when I first came on, isn't it?
Maps, pretty inconsistent.
This is the same one.
They just changed colors based on the year of construction.
Right, the colors, yeah, approved, what's happening when.
Yes.
And it's been on fixldroad.com since July of.
Yeah, I get it, but when I asked questions about it from a, from a road, from a infrastructure committee member, I was told that there's an eligible road. We didn't make any determination, these are eligible, there's a list of eligible roads. Not, these are set in stone, this is what we're doing.
Okay.
And I asked at the infrastructure committee, where, where that was in the proposal and in the ballot, and you didn't, you didn't, you didn't give it to me. I still haven't seen that.
I'm going to do is put this one on pause because we only have 30 minutes to get through one, two, three, four, five, six, seven other things. Does that sound okay, because this can go on for a while and we can read, okay? And while Suzie gets that done, let's just jump down to the snow pile roots real fast. We see you online, like, I see online, they'll get the technical stuff taken care of, but just give us a minute, please. Scott, don't try to run away. Who was talking about the snow pile roots?
I think that might have been Suzie.
I can talk about.
I can talk about them. Um, this is Pam. The snowplow routes were just put in for your information that, um, what route, how the city plows the streets, which ones they salt. The intersections, I know, um, council member, um, Miller brought up about the intersections being plowed and that. The ones on Southfield, to let everybody know that when Southfield, when the road commission comes through and plows the streets, we have already plowed our roads. So the guys have to go back and plow those intersections. They might not get them right away, but they do go back and plow the Southfield intersection, but they have to wait till the old county road commission is down or done with the road, with Southfield Road, because if they don't, they're just going back and redoing, recreating a wheel over and over again. Is that what you wanted to say about the snow plowing?
We just want to head until we can get the, the mics back, you know, get the practical difficulty put together. So.
Is that what you wanted about the plowing that was for their information? And, okay.
Is there any questions regarding the, um, snowplow routes?
No.
Okay, are you all set with the questions from the audience?
All right, again.
Hello, is this good?
Okay, since that's not working, let's, um, jump down to the updated generator quote. Sorry, Mr. Dalton, we'll be with you in just a second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I know you have in your packet a copy of the proposal from, uh, Eckler Electric. As you can see, the price of that quote has gone up, um, based on supplies and the cost of materials. That price is now a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Again, I've tried to reach out to McQ and Electric on multiple occasions, was able to leave a message once. The rest of the times I called, the mailbox was full. I've also reached, reached out to a John McNulty and, uh, he declined to give us a quote. He's having staffing issues. So at this time, we're left with one quote. Uh, over the weekend, I did receive an email. I think all the interim city managers received an email from Pierre Stephan, who I believe is on, on Zoom. Uh, he had a number of really pertinent questions since I'm kind of jumping in, uh, in the middle of this quote. Uh, I then emailed Eckler Electric, uh, those questions and I'm waiting for a response back.
Okay.
Um, the only thing I will tell you is the longer we wait, the price is gonna go up. And we're already talking four to six months before, um, this, this system's gonna be, um, be able to be put in. Right now, we have no backup generator. So when we lose power, the police department and all city halls are out of power.
What happened last week?
What happened last week?
Okay, so my question is, we already did, um, a motion for up to four hundred and sixty-five thousand, right?
So the other thing that we need to look at, cause there are exclusions, if you look at the bottom of that quote on the first page, there are exclusions on different items.
Okay.
Uh, drywall, uh, large rock, uh, concrete debris removal. All those things are not included in the quote. So that would be additional funding.
And we don't know how much the additional funding would be.
Do not know.
So that's kind of, um.
But we have another meeting next week on Monday, week of today. So we'll get those questions answered and maybe try to get an extra bit of what the extra charges may be and report back to them Monday.
That's probably a better idea. So that's not, um. Yeah, so. I think that what we'll do, well, you're just gonna be talking about the, the generator quote in the, I don't know, you're doing it for consideration. Maybe we should just, um, table it for.
So I can call Eckler Electric, have them come out and see if we can walk through their quotes and see if they can give us some type of generalization of what they think cost would be. Again, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be the ones laying the concrete.
Right.
That's gonna be a separate contractor. And again, that, the price of concrete continues to skyrocket. So again, I, I have no problem meeting with them and trying to walk through this to see if we can get some type of, uh, general idea. I'm just not sure how accurate that will be. Again, they're gonna have other subcontractors coming in.
I think that, um, we, I agree that we should probably, on hold, just have idea. I know that we already approved, was it two hundred and sixty-five thousand or sixty-two, something in the ballpark?
Two hundred and sixty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was the match.
Yeah. They were here. They were here last week.
It, it is done. Um, still working out some kinks, but, uh, it's a brand new system and, uh, you know, we've got a little tutorial on how to do everything right now. Get up to speed.
So, um, yeah, let's, why don't we just table that to get some more information and then maybe even, I don't know, I'm looking at, maybe this looks like it could be, I don't wanna say handyman, but maybe a construction company, just to see if you can get in contact with someone and kind of ask them what this would, you know, a price range?
Sure. They, I can ask them who they would use for their subcontractors to do this work.
Okay.
And with another week, maybe we, maybe it's possible to get another, I'm sure, you know, if somebody changes their mind and wants to come out and wants to business.
So if somebody can remember for, um, our meeting to make sure that we table the, uh, updated generator quote, which is item E. Okay, thank you. Going back to Zoom. Dalton, I'm hoping this works.
Hello?
Oh. Percy, does this come up? This is, oh, I'm so, oh, here's. We open, oh, I don't, I don't wanna troubleshoot my phone. I just wanna unmute me. Dalton, are you there?
I'm here. I'm here.
Yes! We got an echo, but darn. All right, let's see. All right.
Time's starting?
Okay, okay. You can go ahead.
I live on the.
I live on, I live over, I live over.
Hello?
I can hear there are a lot of people on.
There are, yes, there's quite a few people on Zoom to purchase the, I, um, we have Dalton and Mike Man and, um, maybe Stacy and we've been hungry to speak about the infrastructure. I recognize that there are, um, some other individuals on the call. They're interested in rest, other issues that are up for discussion. So.
What about the cell phone?
Um, what you can do is, um, my cell phone, what?
Calling or something, one of the time.
Are you gonna go out the cell phone over? Right, exactly.
Do we have a phone in here or no?
Um, can you work on that and we'll go through the rest of this? Cause I'm thinking maybe, uh, cause we've done it before.
Right.
Unless, um, you want me to dial in and see if, uh. Okay, well, let's move on to, um, city administrator search form.
So Mayor and Council, I believe you've had a couple of weeks to go through these proposals. Um, they're all fairly similar. Um, you look at the top range of the prices that they're, uh, uh, they're quoting. You're looking all the way from twenty-four, five, all the way to nineteen, uh, nineteen thousand. Uh, Gov HR and MML have a number of step downs that you can do to have, to reduce that cost. Gov HR goes all the way down to ten thousand and M, MML goes down to fourteen thousand. Um, there are some à la carte things that you can do with each company. So it really depends on what the flavor of council, uh, and how they wanna handle this. The one thing I did think was pretty interesting that, um, MML does a two-year, uh, guarantee, uh, with their, with their, uh, top plan. So that way if that, uh, manager were to leave within two years, they will re, retest. And I believe that price is already included. Um, if anybody has any, um, other questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Anyone have any questions about the, uh, search forms that is on our, um, action items to vote on it tonight? Yes.
I, I have no question. I read through it.
Yeah. Okay.
What hap- I do have a question. What happened, uh, not last city administrator, the previous city administrator that was going through MML? Was there a guarantee at that point? What happened?
We didn't have that package at that time.
Do another search. You didn't have that package at that time?
If I remember, it was like fifteen thousand that we paid for that one, so we would not have that option at that time.
There's two different packages. If I'm not right, fourteen thousand, nineteen thousand?
Fourteen, fourteen, seventeen to nineteen. Okay.
And I roughly believe it's fifteen, we didn't pick that up. Any other questions? Okay. Um, so we haven't gotten that fixed yet, so we'll move on down to the COVID nineteen protocols. Um, but I read it, so I will. Yes. You're gonna get that. If we, well, this is my, I'm kind of letting the cat out of the bed. The last time that we use MML, they do get pretty, uh, the residents input because they have town hall.
Oh.
They have a meet and greet. Yeah, they have a meet and greet and they, um, you have an opportunity to meet the candidates at that time. Um, you also meet with the recruiter to be able to discuss, uh, exactly what you're looking for. Um, so it's in the, it's in the brochure. It tells you everything that they do in the brochure.
Yeah.
The last.
But as a, as a council, we decide what it is that we're looking for as a group?
Yes, they come in and we all sit and do like a study session around that time. And, um, we talk about what is, you know, what is it that we need?
I think so.
And I think.
I'll offer that. Okay.
Um, I also believe, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm wrong with the MML, they also do the pre-screening for people. So we don't just getting a direct set of residents.
I believe they all.
I didn't read it for, um.
Yeah.
I think it was the Baker Tiller that, that they would do the town hall, but I think that was extra.
It was extra. But Baker Tilly does, uh, when they do all their pre-screening, it's all recorded. They give them a number of questions that they have to answer off the call, just so they can see how they, uh, respond.
Yeah, because we have public comment coming up at the end, so. Dalton, if you can hear me, we're gonna try this for a fourth time.
Hello? Hello?
I can hear you over there. All right, let's see if I.
Mic check. One, two, one, two.
You can't hear him in here. All right, so everybody else can hear, but you. While you're doing that, I'll go to the COVID nineteen protocols. Um, and I'm just reading what was sent to us. The COVID nineteen pandemic continues to impact people's daily lives and operation of business. In the, in light of the continually increasing numbers of faces, highly contagious Omicron variant and the need to call public meetings in person, city council may wish to discuss COVID nineteen protocols if they would like to implement a plan. Examples include increased training by the social class, requiring masks for all board and committee members and staff during meetings, requiring masks for all visitors to city hall regardless of vaccination status, limiting the capacity of visitors to city hall, voting the first study session of each month, uh, via Zoom or other session member of your city council may feel supported. This is very open up to discuss what your thoughts are.
I am definitely on board with, uh, the idea of having our first study session of the month via Zoom just to eliminate contact with each other multiple times throughout the month.
Referring mask at all meetings or in mask in the city, in the city hall. Karen Bart, what criteria are you using to decide? I would like you to start with saying what criteria will be used to say if the COVID level is at this point. I, I think, well, we can't tell entrance and meeting the resident. I think that the positive impact on people's ability to, I'm sure, and a fair amount of people. And so I would like to have specific criteria set for when making decisions about, you know, going.
I mean, I could continue with your. See, like now, if we look at it right now and people are able to come into the, if it's in law, how many people are older? Five? I think, I'm sorry, five or six people. And people don't choose to just come in. So it looks like we have more people left online than they actually come in. Um, so I'm not sure of the criteria. I just know that for me, and I'm actually just, that was from my doctor today, is that rockets remain in the air and you may be asymptomatic or might not get to sit with the next person. It's extremely sad. So my thoughts are, I'd rather that you're on the side of caution. And I don't know, I don't know what the criteria, I don't, I don't know what that would be.
Karen, you have a good point in that. I, I think the way we could probably handle that is if we do decide that if we were to put some restrictions in place, then at any given point in the future, I think how we can, you know, have a motion, have a motion at any time to think, you know, the curve goes down, you can make a motion to reduce them.
And the only requirement that apply to across wards, I know last year all the meetings were Zoom, but there were other meetings held, building of, all meetings of large groups. And so there wasn't, uh, you know, major align. Um, so what if this just be strictly for people who are last in the building or?
I'm not sure what we're talking about, would be a large group of any other groups. Um, I don't recall.
But we can meet here inside.
But I think that anyone that uses the building at this point, um, needs to have a mask on any group.
Right, you guys are talking right now about just the study session. So it would be the first Monday of the month, the study session. But for council meeting in a study session, from the third Monday, you would be in chambers because you have to vote in chairs.
She was asking about the mandate, if I'm not mistaken, Karen, about people in the building. And I would think that is anybody that comes in the building to have a mask on, regardless of what meeting it is. And I feel like that idea of let up to my life by a year kind of thing, we see where we're at. But I just think that, you know, we could probably move on to all the process and getting it wiped down and sterilized, whatever you have between every meeting.
And we do. I say in person, we're two years in the vest and we know about masks. We are going to do everything. I'd say need to be in person. We're two years in the test and we know about masks, we are going to have to do everything. It's gonna be out there. We're gonna be out there. We deal with them at the grocery store. We deal with them at a church. We deal with it everywhere. We're separated here. I think we need, anybody who's coming is gonna have a mask and they're gonna protect from adults. What feels have ever been feel comfortable knowing. I think we need to move forward. I think we can't go backwards on this. I think we need to move forward.
Yeah, I just I disagree. You know, I have a setup sign who is uh you know compromised. You know, the uh last last week, you know, we got a simple case of gastroenteritis and ended up in the hospital for five days in intensive care, so I I'm just not gonna. No, but he's he's at our house quite a bit. He stays he stays over three nights a week. No, he's not. Or his own house.
So I think that is, I think that it is um.
Well, it's maybe the case of anybody who has a new compromised family or family members or being with self-care, that part of it is good, but if anybody is comfortable and needs to move ahead, we should tell them. We need to be here for our residents, that's why we're lucky.
Well, I think that we still are here for residents. My point of earlier is that you had opportunities for people to be in the council, saying, I thought the fact is that uh to be in person and only five people showed up. How many people are with Zoom? Do you see that could be, there's twenty people on Zoom at this point. Okay, so thank you. So my thing is is that I think that personally that for the study session, we should do it all by Zoom and then for the meetings that we uh come in and try to, you know, this. No, it's easy said, you know, just don't have people come in that have a, you know, compromising news system. But then we don't know who your people are, who they don't even know who they are. Well, just to discuss, we'll bring it up during um the meeting and we can vote on it. I think it's a action item. Any other questions on that? Okay, um next is the House of the Woods property.
This was Sue B. too. I will try my best now. Um Mr. Rude has um he looked at the um the bid to put the property up for sale. Council has not decided on a price for him to put the property up for. Um the last one we had, the last listing we had, it was at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um the right now, the appraised in, I think, October twenty twenty, it appraised for two hundred and seventeen thousand. And Mr. Rude thinks that the price should be somewhere below two hundred thousand. That's his recommendation. He's also recommending that the um council approved to have brush cleared, high grass, weeds, trees, any loose timber possibly, weather permitting, he'd like to have that stuff cleared out the property too for sale. So those are his recommendations on this. This is something that he was gonna be online for to talk about, um but. Can you bring him up for? No. Yes. Was it what?
Yeah, I think we have a discussion at one point, Scott, about uh you know, they're buying the property as is.
No, I think we we did have, we've had plenty of discussing about this property over the years, but we used to allocate five thousand dollars a year for cutting the grass, um maintenance, but we, the city has never undertaken a campaign to clear out brush. I know that the Friends of the Preserve did some of that, actually, they did a lot of that, but that's been quite a number of years now, and I would imagine if Mr. Stefan's still on Zoom, he probably could share with us a lot more about that. Um he was key in that, but but no, I don't believe we've ever done that.
So I have a question where if we did do that, and I guess I should ask Karen, if you did agree to remove the brush or or do you allocate the price to get them to have the people that remove the price, you get what I'm saying?
I mean, I mean, you'll get more money if it if it looks better, if it's, you know, the less work that they have to do, it will raise the price and not proportionally, will raise it much higher than, you know, say if you spend five thousand dollars to clean it up, you'll get much more than that in return on on price, but you know, the way it is right now, um.
It definitely has an impact.
Is it okay if I have a little panel?
The pricing of the property to give them money to do their own thing.
Right.
Yeah, well, yeah, but again, that's like if you're selling the house and you give them carpet allowance, it still doesn't, you know, make you see past the nasty carpet and pay more for it, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know. I think you probably should ask John Rude um what he's thinking, if how how much, you know, more he thinks we would be able to get if it if it is cleaned up. Hopefully you can hear him.
I can, can I speak now? Okay, um my my recommendation is.
So um we'll wait for it to have those answers, because then my question would be also, and Mr. Rude, if you can hear me, is the price that you're asking us to list at, is that after the brush and everything is being cleared?
The price I'm asking is again under two hundred. Okay, the price I'm.
Anyone else have any questions about the House of the Woods property?
I, yes, if I could speak for a moment. I'm here. Uh if we could price the house under two or the property, excuse me.
And we're down the back billing one point five.
John, I don't think they can hear you.
I believe that's Pam.
I can hear, I can hear the council.
Yeah, I have given um the council, I had sent a list over of all the one and a half inch meters that were um incorrectly reading digits and the multipliers. Uh we, after initially, I first looked at it and um I thought there was more businesses than there were residents, but when I got digging into the accounts and putting a spreadsheet together and doing more uh research on it, I have found out that apparently it is more residential than it is commercial. So I wanted to let you know that. It's also um I don't know what questions you have on that list or if there's questions that you have for me. It's only a hundred and thirty, well, I shouldn't say only, but it's a hundred and thirty thousand. It wasn't the eight hundred to the one point four mil that um has been thrown out there in the past. That was based on water loss, the water losses that we've had over the years with the audit, with the audit and that, so that was not um in this amount. That was a totally different thing than what um this, because we're only finding it's a hundred and thirty thousand for the one and a half inch meters. And then also the um the water, our water still keeps fluctuating, the um water loss. Last month, we were at twelve percent. This month, we were back up at thirty-eight percent, but probably thirty-six because we did have water main break. So we gotta give me a couple more months to figure out, you know, that, but I still am recommending that we have to go with all meters. New meters in everybody's house.
But all the others have have read our font.
Because the the reason is because of the water loss. Our meters are so old that I think water is going through these meters and they are not being read with the water going through the meters, but that is not part of this. This is just um the, for you guys to decide if you want to backfill the residents in the commercial buildings that had the one and a half inch meter, so.
Just the commercial building?
Nope, the commercial and the residential. They had, the list I gave you, if they wanted, if you guys want to backfill them for the one and a half inch meters. And I don't know if Bruce has any input on that.
Yeah, just, I mean, it's the only thing I wanted to just add in a little bit more detail, and so over the last four years, the the total water water loss was about one point four million uh in in revenue dollars, and the figures that we threw out at the last meeting of of the potential for the for the uh backfilling recovery was based on the fact that we went from forty-three percent in water after we made the fix, we went from forty-three percent to twelve percent. So that's roughly about a seventy-five percent decrease. So had that held, and we were assuming, we made the assumption based on the data that we had at the time, that seventy-five percent of the overall water loss was due to, you know, the 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 billing issue that we had. And as we, as Pam indicated, you know, the water loss shot back up, so it it's probably not as big of a contributing factor as we thought it was. Which is a separate issue. We'll still need to continue down that path and try to figure out what's going on with the water loss, but this is really the discussion, just to figure out whether or not we think we should be backfilling and if so, how then?
I I was at the SACLA meeting and I brought the stuff there because I thought perhaps other communities have had similar issues. And um the SACLA attorney is looking into that. There are rules and regulations that govern utilities, and there are a couple of states that allow you to build up six years for water because as uh government officials, elected officials of municipality is responsible for collecting that money, no matter what the reason was. So we use taxpayer dollars and we use resources, so we have a responsibility to to, you know, go back as far as we are legally able to, so I think that we need to get that information before we just, you know, put some something out there. And also at SACLA, they said, well, it will, it will be easy, you know, the rates, so you'll be able to figure out. Um and looking at these properties on BS, BSNA online, you can see where the change occurred and what happened and, you know, where that's made up. Now, I did see a couple of, um at least one very large property that there's something very odd going on in there, and that uh has not been updated and that did not appear on the list, so you know, I think there's still, I'll share.
Pam, if you would please.
About that, but.
And Karen, before before I brought that up at the last meeting, I did consult with the city attorney to see if, you know, legality of us going back four years and and backfilling and all that. Yeah, the the biggest thing, and thi- this issue came up in the city Detroit, I believe it was two thousand seventeen, where they had a similar situation. They had a software changeover and very similar to ours were a certain group of re- uh both residential and commercial properties had this uh billing error. They they chose to only go back and try to collect uh backfilling from the residential properties, not the commercial properties, and that's where the court found that that was um disparate treatment between the residential and commercial property. So my recommendation was that as long as it's done equitably for all parts of regardless of status or size, um that the city should be okay, and again, utilizing the lowest known rate for that period of time. I think it's a it's a pretty safe, and I'm assuming you're talking about Bob Davis. I could I could talk to him too, see if he's experienced it before.
Look, he's he's checking on for me, so they're gonna get back with me. Um also, the eleven point nine rate that's on there, talking about giving the lowest rate. Um when I went through, I know there's some of that paying, making up for deals that were estimated that it is paying up on, and there are thirteen oh five for hundred cubic feet. Some of my bills um on the minimum charge, I'm paying twenty-seven fourteen for hundred cubic feet. So there's um, I I don't, I don't think we should go with uh the lowest lowest grade. And I I didn't, in none of, none of my bills did I, since two thousand fifteen have I paid eleven point nine, so um I think that.
Well, you have to include that you're, you would have to include your meter charge. That's probably why your bill is different, because you have meter charges in there. You have surcharges, things like that, different things. This is just the water and sewer rate together.
And so right now, we're at.
No, I'm I'm just saying, if I I use two per hundred cubic feet of water and I'm paying sixty-six dollars a month, you know, or actually that, take off the capital improvement bond, ten twenty or ten seventy, whatever, it's like, take it back to fifty some dollars a month. You know. No, I I just mean that take off to, I don't know if I pay two something for my meter or three something for my meter, take that off, take off the minor charges. Still talking about way more for hundred cubic feet that a lot of people who are on the minimum plan are paying as opposed to this eleven point nine. So I don't think, I don't think that's fair to the residents that have been paying and have been subsidizing the losses. So that's what I'm saying, I would need to look at that.
Well, I was gonna say, and correctly the wrong term, the rate is 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 the rate. I mean, if you use a cubic feet of water, it's eleven point nine, or actually, right now, it's it's twelve point nine three five. But the the reason why I I think that you think it's different is because if you're using the minimum, I mean, we set a minimum value. So if you only use, actually only use two cubic feet, the rate that you're being charged is still gonna be twelve point nine. It's just that you you haven't met the threshold of the four cubic, I don't know, uh whatever, four units.
No, but I'm paying, I'm paying it no matter what.
Exactly.
And anywhere from zero to four is a minimum bill and you're paying that no matter what.
What's the percentage of our residents that are in that section?
There's quite a few. I don't know percentage, but there's quite a few.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So that that rate was just when we went back, because we did notice, or I definitely, I noticed that some of them are different dates. They're not all going back four years, not going back three years.
Twenty, well, I saw.
Right.
And we could decide, you know, as a council, we could say, all right, well, you know, you know, the current rate is twelve point nine, you know, for purposes of the discussion, Pam used eleven point nine, you know, which is below straight over the four years. I mean, there's nothing to say that we can't go back and say, all right, let's just charge them ten. Part of this was our fault. Let's give them a little bit of a break.
Well, if 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 we can do that, like we may be legally bound to not cut a deal, you know what I mean? Like you need to, that's the piece we need to find out about, and um if there was a rate for two thousand, if it happened in two thousand sixteen, what was the rate then? Happened in two thousand eighteen, what was the rate then? I mean, I know it's gonna take time, but that would be a a fairer, I think, um, you know, it is, it is, you know, on the fault of the city, but um again, you have the responsibility to make sure the tax dollars are properly collected. So I I don't, you know, I don't know that we have room to play around a whole lot.
It looks like this.
No.
So at some point, we'll we'll have to discuss this, so once you get your information back, you can bring it up at the next meeting.
It is a big amount. I mean, between hundred and thirty and six hundred, we threw out, and what's missing? Could we put a water condition together? Residents that could help with figuring this out? Like you.
A water structure.
Together, maybe you need a water line. We could really dive into this and. We need a light work.
That's kind of what we've been doing in the infrastructure committee. I mean, this is, this is, I mean, it's two separate issues. One one issue is the backfilling. The other, the other issue is the um, you know, the water loss and 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 so we've been working on the water loss, you know, we've exhausted, I mean, this is, this is why we, you know, kind of landed on the on the meters, which Pam was mentioning a little bit earlier. Um because we've eliminated, and Scott, you know, you're the engineer, it's all a few time in, but we've, and I I can read through the list of all the things we've tried. We've pretty much eliminated most, all of the obvious uh, you know, reasons for the water loss, and and it's, you know, kind of a a given that, you know, are the standard in the industry, that water meters are typically replaced around every twenty years because they start mechanical one, they just start to slow and read inaccurately, and so given the fact that we've eliminated just about everything else, you know, we feel that the the water meters are the next step, and there's, and again, this is a discussion for another time, but there's a whole host of other reasons why it makes sense to replace the water meters as well outside of the the water loss issue, but I'll turn over to Scott.
No, you, that's pretty correct. Uh, you know, the water meters are twenty, twenty-five years old. They do deteriorate over time. Uh, we are working with SACLA, trying to obtain data. It's a lot of data. We're trying to get through it. Uh, I think the biggest thing we're looking at right now is to see how much water is going through the meter at eleven mile during the nighttime. Should be relatively low, and we're finding some miscellaneous readings that look pretty high. So we're trying to work with SACLA on that. Uh, they did do a test for the city about a little bit before Christmas. Uh, they actually shut the meter, they they turned the bypass on, so no water should be going through the main meter, and that main meter should read zero, and it was reading zero. So they were pretty confident the meter was uh reading correctly. Uh, we just want to look at them, basically them, that water usage from midnight till like five AM, so.
Doesn't jump up again, you think it's because of that water main break?
No, not all of it, only about three, um because it went back up to, it went back up to thirty-eight. So I figured about three for the water main break, because it did run during Christmas. It ran a whole day before they actually.
Yeah, we we used an online calculator to do a rough estimate of how much, based on the size of the of the crack and how long it ran and so forth, and so it's probably two or three percent.
And that was from Scott, our engineer.
Yeah.
So again, it's just getting the information back from Karen's contact. And um, your information, the data from SACLA and then we can move forward and so.
I think also from Scott in terms of, you know, if we can go, what are, what our flexibility is on the rate.
Well, I think that comes between.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk to Mr. Davis. He, he does all the representation for SACLA.
Okay, so we'll just bring it up at the next. Next meeting, just revisit it. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm John Rude and I'm, I think, counsel, they want me to speak today because they want me to speak right now.
Yep, we're gonna go back to the house in the woods.
Okay. A couple of things. Uh, yes, I did recommend that it be priced under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I know we assessed valuations more than that, uh, but at the same time, I think council is looking, the city is looking at can it be sold? Uh, other things I recommended is uh, there's quite a bit of fallen timber there. And I'm not talking about just little branches, uh, there's logs, I mean, like a couple of trees just were filmed, okay? Uh, maybe a good idea to remove that property, or excuse me, remove those items. Uh, there's a lot of brush, there's weed, trees. Uh, obviously at this time of year, it's more difficult to couple on and uh remove uh maybe that brush. But if, you know, if we do get a break in the weather here with the snow notes, it might be a good idea to at least try to clear. Some of that uh brush and debris that's in there. And when I say debris, there's no trash. Again, it's just a lot of fallen timber, weed trees, whatnot. Um, one other item that I suggested was that the city considers land contract. Uh, it is a vacant piece of property. Land contract, if the developer does purchase the property, they purchase it on a land contract. And can, with approval of the city. Uh, any type of construction that's gonna be started on the property or any type of a loan that a developer would get. Uh, he has to pay the property off at that time. If lender will not lend money on that property. Unless the property is being cleared and they have first position. So eventually the city would get paid. Um, and again, as I indicated before, um, I was asking for under two hundred thousand dollars. And to maybe do some staging on the property, i.e. getting rid of the brush, uh, getting rid of the fallen timber. Uh, and uh, cutting the grass again, that we have to wait off until probably a little later in March or whatever it takes them to. Based on that, that's my presentation.
Thank you. So, uh, my question was like the amount to get something, get a property cleaned up. Would that be something that we could take like out of the uh asking price of it? I know that that's, you know, that's the analogy, I know you heard the analogy that Karen had, I get it, you know.
Well, I, I would, I would say at this, at present, we're looking at doing that. And that would be in, when I say in the price, the purchaser would look at that and say, okay, the property's been cleared, that's free. It makes it more attractive to get the property sold. That's my recommendation. Now, are you gonna get that money back? I think you could get that money back with a specific offer. But at the same time, you know, I can't give you a guarantee on that.
Do you have any type of, I mean, I know you're not a, a landscaper, but you have any, any rough idea of how much you think it might take? To get that property cleaned up?
I couldn't give you that. That's well above my pay cap.
Tom, can you have a walk through it? Was there a path for you to get through? Or were you just talking from?
No, no, I, I, I watched property. Yes, I watched the property. Um, you know, I think it's a very buildable property and I, I think uh the, the city could get some pretty good tax base out of it. Something that every community needs. Uh, I did watch the property and answer your question. And I did see uh just debris and uh fallen timber. Uh, I mentioned to uh. The city manager, interim city manager, uh, there was a clock in there, which is what I call them, but uh.
There was a box I walked over.
Stuff in there. I don't know what was in there, but the police.
Water holes.
Went, well, whatever was in there, but anyways, uh, they removed it, so it's gone. It, it wasn't a clock and I.
But where it was sitting, I understood.
When I looked at it, I thought, what's happening here?
It was.
Can I find the dog in it?
No, no, there was, there was nothing alive in it, so.
Well, um, anyone else have any questions for?
Rude.
Sorry, sorry.
So John, I would think before like March, by the time it's cleared, you're gonna stick, you'd rather it's cleared.
I, no, I, I think you could put it on the market ASAP. I think you should put it on the market ASAP. Who knows? Maybe a purchase will come along and wants to say they will take their, their responsibility. I'm just suggesting that if, you know, whether it's more climate, yeah, yeah, and maybe uh consider clearing the debris on there. If you're able to clear some of those fallen timber on this plant too, that's great. But I'm anxious to get started on this. This is the time when builders and developers are looking for property. They want to get started ASAP. Again, my main selling features are under two hundred thousand dollars. Number one, and number two, if, if the city would consider land contract terms. And of course, any, any offer that comes in is up to the city.
I guess my, my question would be, you know, you said a few times, under two hundred thousand. You have a number that you're thinking of, like a hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine?
Well, I mean, that, that, that would be a start, uh, you know, was it a hundred and eighty-nine would be a little bit better. Obviously, the lower you price any property, the better the chances are of its sale.
Anybody else have any other questions? So, thank you. It is, so we'll have to discuss that.
So I guess, should we just?
So, yeah, that's discussed with them, it's the action I'm proceeding.
Yeah. I'm gonna lean on Karen because she's the realtor of the group, as far as land contract and, you know, recommended price.
You know, I'm giving away.
Right.
But.
Yeah, we got ninety thousand dollars.
We know two fifty was too high because you didn't sell, but also it was marketed, marketed in there, yeah. Um, so. We, we were staying, we're going crazy, so. You never know, right, John?
That's correct, yeah. With the market over.
Yeah, yeah. So like one ninety?
I'm saying like one ninety?
Yeah, one ninety.
You said one ninety?
One ninety, one ninety five?
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Did he say one ninety?
He, he said. Maybe one ninety.
That's the idea. And then, um, what do you all think about the land contract?
Can he stick around or not?
We could ask him to, hey, John? I think they have a question.
No, I don't have a question right now. I just wanted to make sure he was here before we make.
Yeah.
The actual motion and decision.
Yeah.
So I was just asking if you'd stick around.
Okay, oh, absolutely. Then he want me to go in there.
No, okay.
I'll, I'll be back.
Okay. Um. What's going on with Susan?
Uh, she's still thankful you're out there.
Okay, so then this Christmas tree chipping.
I, that's what I just didn't ask her about it, you know, on the agenda. There is. I'm sorry. I asked, there was just a mix-up with the company and the chipping of the trees. They didn't get done. Um, they had told me that they were gonna do it the fourteenth. Up to the fourteenth. It was put on the website as the fourteenth. They told somebody else in our office, the, or the temp. So there was a mix-up with the company and us within city hall on that. Um, but we did get it taken care of and if there are no tr- if there are still trees out there, our DPS has been gonna. To get rid of them, so.
That's, uh, thank you for dealing with that. There were just a whole bunch of other pieces that, that compounded it. And there won't be violations, uh, issues?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
I can tear mine in half. I got one. I can tear my citation in half.
They were just notices that were given out. Um, Ronnie didn't know at the time that, um, we were calling the company and that when he went up to. To do his code enforcement, so.
Now, mayor, can I just make a comment about this situation briefly?
Sure.
So this, I know that this blew up over the weekend and there was a lot of emailing back and forth about it. Um, and I'm just gonna reiterate again the, the importance of following the appropriate procedure. And not sending stuff directly to all council members. Th- this is a perfect example. I mean, if this, if this issue had come up, um, let's say it was an issue with the vendor or something like that. And it, obviously this, not the best example, but because this is not a city contract. But if it were, and council were to have to have a discussion and potentially take action against the contractor or seek a different contractor. Well, then this issue becomes an issue that the city has to deliberate on and, and make a decision. And all of those emails back and forth to all council members, those all become OMA violations. So just, I understand that sometimes residents will get a, a plant a bug in your ear and they want a response right away, but. I mean, it, it was, it's the weekend, nobody's, nobody's in city hall on the weekend. The Monday was a federal holiday. There's nobody working during a federal holiday. So communicate to the mayor and, and, and respond back to that resident or whoever and indicate that. You know, your concern has been received, it's been forwarded on and it will be addressed. So the, the barrage of emails to, to various staff members and, and all the council, that, that kind of can't continue. That has to stop. Um, and again, it's not. It, it's not trying to pick on any one council member. It's just, these are things that could potentially create problems for the city. So we're trying to, to stop that and trying to prevent that. Um, comments, uh, again, and, and same thing with social media. The Villager's website, the city does not monitor that, so any comments made to that. They might, those people might as well go out and scream in the street and expect Pam Scott and Sui to hear that response. Because, and, and we talked about this before, the cost for the city to be a part of that Facebook page. Because everything the city is a part of and monitors and comments on, it has to be digitally backed up in case there's a FOIA request. With respect to a specific post or a specific response. So the decision was made by council that the cost of, of backing up the Villager's Facebook page. I think it was over thirty thousand dollars, um, to, to store that data. And, and so the ci- the city is not on the Villager, so again, please, um, don't expect the city to respond. Or don't encourage residents to voice concerns on Facebook because it's not gonna get a response from the city. And all it's gonna do is, is spread misinformation or, or fuel the fire of people that may already be frustrated because they're not getting a response. Uh, you know, they're, they're posting something on a, on a forum that's not being monitored and not getting, not getting the city's business. So I just wanted to make that point and just use that as kind of a. Could have been potentially a situation, but unfortunately it's not, but just please try to be a little more cognizant of that.
I think one thing, just to clarify, Scott, too, is, is that, you know, at least when we talk about this with the former council. Council should not be posting on there about anything that, that has to do with, with, with city, with the city, correct?
Really, it's a, it's a tough area, right? Cause you're all residents, these are all your neighbors, these are all your friends, but you're also a city council member. So everything you do, whether you intend it to be or not, it's, you're viewed as a, as a city council person. And your, your actions are viewed and can even be construed by some as action of the city council, acting on behalf of the whole. And you, you've had issues over the years with, with certain planning commissioners that went and took it upon themselves to engage in discussions with. Outside entities and agencies that, you know, we get a, the city gets a phone call saying, hey, your planning commission wants us to do this. It's like, no, one planning commissioner wanted you to do that, but you know, the, the representation and, and the, the perception is that you're speaking on behalf of all the others. So try to be, I mean, again, I, if in a perfect world, you gave one comment on stuff on that. I understand it happens, but try, try to limit it if possible, uh, and try to limit, if you are going to, try to limit it to. Just either correcting misinformation or providing contact information or, or location where they can get accurate information.
That's a perfect personal view.
But if you can't get, you can't get information, it isn't misinformation or it isn't whatever. And part of the issue with the Christmas trees was someone called here and was the attitude that they got was that, well, that was supposed to be done on the eleventh. You're, you have to take care of it yourself. You're on your own. And then, as you said, then the next, whatever, before there was an answer for residents. About what they were supposed to do with their trees. Some people that had those trees off for weeks. Um, then, you know, the code enforcer is out giving out notice, violation notices. So, you know, the coordination, you know, people knowing what's, what's uh going on. So I don't have confidence that, um, you know, things were, were being. Handled in the right way or whatever, because, because again, that had been on the website for, again, weeks about January fourteenth. January fourteen, January fourteen, so, um. You know, there doesn't seem to be a, that doesn't seem to be an avenue to deal with those kinds of things.
Well, I did the right thing in sending an email. I think, you know, to, to alert us is the part, it's the, um. Responding on Facebook and Villager, that they're not, they're not looking at, uh, Villager.
I don't.
And then also for it to be the weekend, no, that was, was that the weekend or was that the actual holiday? They, that's not, that doesn't constitute an emergency, so you know, most likely they weren't gonna respond. But, um, I do agree that if you knew, you know, if you all knew that there was an issue going on with the trees being out there. That Ronnie should have gotten that information first thing in the morning he came in, so he would not have been giving out warnings. Cause I mean, I could see how that could totally uh upset someone. So just, I mean, whenever there's something that comes up that, you know, trash, whatever, that it's, it's a, a problem, just alert Ronnie. Send him an email first thing in the morning or just, you know, call him or let him know this, hey, this is what's going on.
We did alert Ronnie because I had, um, called up to the front and told them before he goes out to let him know. He, um, was misunderstood because he thought it was only one address. He didn't realize it was more than one address. So, because when I called him after he, the first violation, after I saw the email come through, I did call Ronnie on the phone and told him not to. Touch any more trees and that at that time. And he, and I said, you were told that to, and he says, oh, I thought it was just the one address. So then he did stop after that, but he had already done four or five of them. I don't remember how many, but.
And then also, um, what someone was saying, it might be nice to, to, to use quite the, um, reports to you. Um, just for him to actually talk to the resident, um, because I'm, my understanding. My understanding is that they were just tagged and no communication. I think that that would be important also, just to, to.
We're working on phone calls to notify.
Okay.
And that's a, I, I, you know, that happens in all my communities with code enforcement. They, for some reason, just like to write it down and hang it on the door instead of actually going knock, have a conversation. So I think, uh, keep working on that.
Uh, I'm not trying to, you know, the same, these are kind of things that would keep people.
Long line of code enforcement, I think the way the courts fix, which I think is the way that residents are supposed to be. And I noticed when I logged on, it said citizen login or official login. And of course, I logged in as citizens, because I've been posting for a couple of years. But am I an official? And who, who, who's the official that are returning here? If that wasn't the courts.
I'm gonna assume it's the administrators that were the officials that were.
Well, I was gonna say, is everything you see what we see as a citizen?
Okay.
So there's really no difference.
Yeah.
You just log in to say it's done or you taking care of it.
They can update it.
As I remember.
So, um, just, we are way over time, just to kind of, what's going on with the, um.
Well, I, we have one more idea right now, but, um, you can't do it in this meeting because I, I would use this device and try something else. I, I'm at a loss and I'm sorry for, for our public time now. And you all, I thought we had to figure it out and we didn't talk about it earlier and it was working just fine. So I, I.
So let's get through the, um, rest of the study session and then that's when we have to switch over to the different zones.
Yeah.
And try it at that point and then, um, I know you said you had a, well, we'll talk about it after, about the pass for us, okay? So, uh, we're done with the Christmas tree, tree tripping, shipping and emails and that, right? Did you have anything else that you wanted to add to that?
No, I'm thinking.
Okay. Um, mayor and council comments. Um, there are comments from, there is public comments that I received.
Stand with me, I'll search for the first. Let me see the update on it.
So we, we have, you initially gave out one conditional offer that was rejected. We moved to the second person that was in line, and that conditional offer has been extended, and we are waiting to hear back, uh, whether it's gonna be accepted or not.
We have one, uh, public comment from Bruce Pocus. I desire to listen to the discussion on the road recommendation at the study session. I'm going to assume that he heard it, because I saw him in the meeting. The next one is um, Board President Solita Rice. Um, today we have President Rice, Vice President Bland, and Trevor Johnson from the Southfield Board of Education and Attendants with our superintendent. We are concerned about the current proposal or resolution to the Laker School, and would like to engage in a healthy dialogue with the Laker Village Council regarding this matter. So that will be, um, um, actually, I would get to grab how to defend this. I'll give them opportunity in the meeting then, for them to discuss it when that comes up. All right, and, um, that's all I have for, um, public comments. Anyone else have any council comments?
I have council comments on, um, our decision to hire three managers, three senior administrators. And at the December twentieth meeting, we voted to instill three temporary city administrators with an increase in salary of forty-eight thousand dollars each. It's been a month, and I don't think this experiment is working. I take full responsibility for my vote, however, I reconsidered and I would like my fellow council members to reconsider as well. It's been a disaster and a heavy cost to the residents. We need to manage city spending, and it should be our priority. I'll be honest, it's not an excuse, but for ten full days prior to the meeting, I was battling a virus, and it was not COVID, but I was debilitated. But I'm still recovering, and I have since regained my voice and my sensibilities, literally and figuratively. I was never provided salaries nor previous duties and responsibilities for temporary administrators. Perhaps mayor may pretend we're pretty, but that information was never shared. I personally witnessed no improvement in any aspect of day-to-day business, but I have heard rumbling and exasperation from the added responsibilities, which I understand. It's imperative this body thoughtfully debate and reconsider the merits of a three-person administrator. We need to make sound and practical decisions regarding our city matters. And the excessive need and spending for three temporary managers, I think, needs to be revisited and, in my opinion, rescinded. I propose that those interested in the position as one city manager administrator needs to apply an interview with the council. The application must include a list of your previous duties and responsibilities and your salary, and a reasonable request for compensation based on any added responsibilities. Once a temporary administrator is appointed, I will stand behind any decision or request made that will provide the best service for our residents. And it's nothing personal against three people, I just don't think three people managing a city is very beneficial to our residents. Or to this, what's been happening?
So can you give an example, what's disastrous? Because I'm, I'm not really sure.
Who's running the show? I mean, who, do you work, who works for a company where you have three managers? Or administrators?
I think we established that Pam was the point person for this administration.
So Pam is the point person for what? Like, who do I go to?
That's your, that's the go-to person that you go to for city business, and Pam can determine from there who gets what, they each have, um, responsibilities. But the, the quarterback, let me get in my football thing. Is Pam, and then she will hand off to Scott for.
And that's what I'm assuming, but pick an administrator.
And she also said to us, hold on one second, she said to us, um, early on, and I was here when this was going on, having her do her treasurer duty and city manager was too much for her.
And I'll do that as well.
Treasure position that I'm doing since February.
So it was, so it is not, um, because of the request of the employee saying that she needed help, that's when we came up with the idea, that we wanted to bridge, if I, if I'm not mistaken, um, to have them all split the duties for this. Now, one thing we can do is that we can make sure that we pick a search company tonight to make sure we move forward or find the city manager, and then this will be, you know, a moot point, but, um, having them apply, who would run the city while they're applying to be temporary?
It's not a big application, it's just I'd like to do it.
But so, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm asking.
I don't know, I don't even know if anybody wants that response.
So, so, what, because this is how I'm taking this, so please, you know, do the clarity for me. Um, we remove them out of this position, we don't have a city manager, but we, we ask people to apply to the temporary position. While they're filling it out and getting time for all of us to come to a meeting, who's running the city?
Just a meeting like this.
No, 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 okay, what's the day-to-day operations of the city? We remove them from their place as an interim city manager, they're no longer the city manager, and now whoever wants to fill out an application to become the interim, while we're going through that process, who is running the day-to-day operations?
Well, I was, because I was thinking, I'll admit it, I thought the forty-eight thousand dollars was gonna be split between them. I had no clue they were each getting forty-eight thousand.
So that's not my question just yet, my question, but my question is, no, my question is, if we do it what you're proposing, and I'm truly trying to understand it, who runs the day-to-day operation that we remove them out of their position?
Or who was running it before we did this?
Oh, Cheryl Mitchell was, but she quit, so now.
Who was running it when she quit?
The three of them.
No, I was in.
Oh, you were in place, and then you got, you came and you told us it was too much, and so it was Pam.
Right, I guess, can I ask the question a different way?
Sure.
So Cheryl Mitchell was working about eighty hours a week, if not more. Pam is working sixty, seventy hours a week? Eighty hours a week?
Pam probably works a hundred.
Before the adminis, before the additional responsibilities?
No, I still was working.
Okay, fine, so if we were to take, and, and Suzie and Scott are also working, you know, they're not, they're not forty-hour a week people. So if we were to just say, all right, one of them, be the city administrator, how are they gonna do a hundred and sixty hours worth of of, a week worth of, worth of work in a week? I don't know how that.
But that's not my, my, that's not my question.
That's not my question.
My question is, who will run the city, the day-to-day operations, if we remove them out of their place right now?
Assistant city administrator.
She's saying she can't do it.
If she had the funds to hire more people, or she could pay these two and give them responsibilities, we give them raises.
So that's not making sense right now, at all, because if you're removing them, and she says she can't do it, when you want them to fill out an application to see if they, who was gonna become the city, um, manager or the interim city manager, we need to have someone that's running the day-to-day operation.
We're doing it right now, we've given them that responsibility until we take it away from them, and then we do it a different way. But if you guys are fine, I think we're obviously.
I'm really trying to understand your logic.
I, my logic is I've never been in business all the, I've, I've never worked with three managers, there, there's always somebody in charge who appoints, who hires, who fires, who, I mean, it's, you just need to have a leader. One leader, I've never heard of co-leaders, I don't know, maybe that's the new world. I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't think this is working for a while, I think that's a big expense.
I personally think that, and this is my opinion, that I believe it, and we'll go through the, the search, and, um, because it's only, it's temporary, I think that if we have protocols and policies that are in place of you know, the way that they're receiving information, it might not be as disastrous as what you're saying, because they, give me one second. Because one thing that, the complaint that I got from each person is that there was too much coming at them from every council person. Where, again, when we started, and I know you all don't like doing this, was to filter it through me so I could let them know who, you know, what needs to be done and helped them prioritize. But because we don't like to do that, everything they felt attached from all these emails, so, um.
Because we're, we are all the boss of the city administrators, and just because there happens to be three, then that's three people that the city council, five people.
You and Laura both sent one person the same exact issue, which over, which about the Christmas tree.
Okay.
Okay, but the fact is, is that if you had sent it to one person, I would have been able to talk to Pam instead of being, and I'm just giving voice to, and I'm, you know, no threat here, giving voice to why you might think it's disastrous and why they're feeling overwhelmed, because they're being attacked from every side, from every council person, and there was a procedure in place, not because one person is higher than the other or anything like that, it was just to have some processes in place so they won't feel overwhelmed. And right now, the letter that's in my packet, which I'm very disappointed to, uh, read, and here the background of it, we need.
Oh, you hadn't seen that previously before it was put out publicly, and talking about, you weren't, I thought, weren't the decision maker in that?
A decision maker in the.
Putting that in the packet?
Um, I wasn't a decision maker to make, put it in the packet, I saw it, but if you want to put it in, I mean, one thing, we ran on transparency. So that's why it's in there, so everybody knows what's going on.
Okay, I, okay.
So, um.
We'll be posting some more.
Pardon me?
We'll, we'll be including some other things.
Send it to me and let's find out. So, uh.
Well, I'm not, not comfortable with everything going through.
I, I, I understand that.
So.
Well, it has to go to somebody.
That's the piece that is working. So Pam is in charge, and she should be getting more money.
So the fact is Pam is, Scott is, and Suzie is, when we get to the meeting, we can all vote on whether or not we want to rescind it. I think that we can just do a better, um, procedures and how they get their thing. Um, writing out exactly what they're responsible for, and sending that out to all the councils, so then we'll have an exact idea of this goes to, you know, just have it written out.
Right, I asked for that this number seven.
Well, I apologize that you did not get it, but that's what I'm asking for now, so we'll take care of that, but if we can put that together, what each person is supposed to do, and include your email, and, you know, your work cellphone number, and just put that on a list to send out to the, uh, council, so they'll know exactly who to go to for what. And will that work?
Could I go, I just have one really quick question. What's the one position that really needs to be filled right now that's vacant?
The city manager.
Really help the three of them?
The city manager.
Well, let's just, well, that's gonna be a hundred and twenty days, is there anything that can help them right now?
No, city manager.
I'm asking them, if I'm understanding. What's the one position that would help you in alleviating some of these responsibilities? And so they're not so tired and overwhelmed and overwhelmed.
A city administrator. I, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to be flippant, I'm, but the mayor is very, very correct, I mean, if it, having a having a city administrator would be.
Okay, what about you guys?
I would say a city administrator, because they have with the budget. I'm gonna be dealing with the budget all by myself this year, they are the finance director of the city administrators. I get started and I'll be doing the budget for sure.
Who's doing all the, um, well, who's doing all of our taxes and all that right now, and water bills and all that?
I have Lenis doing water bills, Lenis is doing accounts payables, Melody does water bills and answers the counter. Um, Kelda answers the counter, does water bills. Um, I don't have anybody doing bankrupts, I do all the bankrupts. I came in on Martin Luther King Day, my day off, I came in, I worked from nine o'clock in the morning till seven-thirty at night. I've been here every night till eight o'clock at night.
If we don't get a, a business for three months, isn't there something we can do to help them out right now with the windows, with accounting, with anything, that's what I'm saying.
Well, they just gave you the information that you asked for, what was it that you need, Scott?
City administrator.
They just gave you the answer for it.
I mean, there are other pilot positions that do need to be filled, we need to fill the city clerk, we don't have, somebody sign documents, I mean.
But you've extended a offer to someone, right? So that's a moot point.
So we're waiting on that, but I mean, that's one position. We've lost, um, the project manager for the DDA. That's adding more responsibility, that's adding more responsibility onto Suzie, because now that's her part, you know, so Suzie's doing two and a half jobs, I'm doing two and a half jobs.
You're doing two jobs.
You know, so, I mean, we're all doing multiple jobs. And it's been like this for a while.
I know it has, that's what I'm saying, it's nice to have a leader who can spread it out.
Okay, is there any other, um, council comments? Anything else? I know we're still working on the public, uh, comments. I'm looking there.
I have to, um.
So we're gonna, are we going to?
We're gonna have to, I, I can't troubleshoot that, um, for the study session to resume, I can't troubleshoot that.
So we need to log off of this one, too.
We said, I'll break it up here.
Okay, so then what I will entertain is to adjourn the, um, study session, and, um, this will give everybody a five-minute, uh, a break, and then we'll be right back.